Good morning, welcome to our Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 11th, 2025. Our first order of business would be to please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number two is agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the agenda, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we will recess for the Economic Development Authority to have a motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to recess, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This time, we'll call the order, call it to order, the Economic Development Authority for March 11th, agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda today.
Move to approve.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Minutes from February 25th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Fourth item, Bring It Home Rental Assistance Program application. Nancy, good morning.
Morning.
Good to see you on this beautiful day.
So today, we wanted to share with you an announcement from Minnesota Housing that they have availability of funding for a rental assistance program. The state knew that the federal government wasn't providing enough vouchers in our jurisdiction under the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and so their intent has always been to create their own rental assistance program. So in '23, they did establish the Bring It Home Program and are now rolling it out. Their intent was to mimic the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and understanding that we already have housing authorities across the state administering these types of rental assistance, they wanted to work directly with the housing authorities in this, across the state, and they also are working with the tribal nations as well. And so they actually did allocate every housing authority across the state with minimum grant amount, so Blue Earth County has three, or $63,021 and could serve approximately five to seven vouchers. Mankato received $728,393 and could serve between 60 and 80 vouchers. And then within our region, the South Central Multi-County HRA, MVAC, and New Ulm are some of the other ones in our Region 9, and there is another 104 vouchers in that jurisdiction. So definitely, the state wanted to make sure that the program does cover the full state, and so there could be some housing authorities in that jurisdiction, in our jurisdictions that may choose not to administer it, maybe they don't get enough vouchers to make it worth their time to do some extra paperwork in the process. So it would really be working together in our region to make sure that we access all these resources to our community, so we're definitely working with South Central Multi-County HRA and Minnesota Valley Action and even New Ulm to see how we can work together to make sure we bring all those funds here to the region, so we might put in a joint application or we could do separate ones, but our intent really was that if we do a joint one, if one part of our region can't spend, utilize all of those vouchers, that another part of our region would be able to do that, so it gives us that flexibility. I know here, in Blue Earth County, we have 100, or 917 families on our waiting list, so we definitely see a need for the program and the resources and want to make sure we have all of them here in the region, so we'll be working together to put that application together. It's due April 21st, and it does target families with children under 18 first, and then we can use anyone else on our list, so it doesn't, it's one of those opportunities now where we can kind of target some of the families. We've done a lot of helping people with disabilities, with veterans and domestic violence and things like that, but families have been underserved, so this would be a way to target some of them in this process as well. Definitely homelessness will be a key part of it as well. They will be providing us with upfront starting costs, so they'll give us two months of funding upfront so that we don't have to be spending money and waiting for it to be reimbursed. They have startup costs for the program as we set up financial systems and softwares to administer the program, they will cover those expenses, and then they provide us with an administrative fee per voucher, and right now, they're looking at around $105 for that. Just as comparison, the voucher program, we get about $70, so they're really trying to fully fund the needs of the program in that manner, and then they'll have that rental assistance that will be there as well. They do give us this minimum out because if we do work together with other jurisdictions, we could end up with more funding in the request, or as they find other parts of the state are not using it, we could be funneled into that process, so we're keeping that kind of open at this time, but we'd be asking you to authorize us to submit this application to the state.
Awesome. Any questions for Nancy at this point?
It's pretty exciting.
I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mark, do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Comments?
Good.
Sounds like a great program, congratulations. Good for you guys.
Good.
Just more work for you, but unfortunately, you got some resources.
We can definitely serve more families.
Well, that helps, thank you very much.
All right, I got a motion in a second to approve the Bring It Home Rental Assistance Program. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
This time, if there's no further business to discuss, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. You need me?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Move back to our regular agenda for the county board meeting. Item number four is the drainage. Ryan Hindiker, good morning.
Morning, Ryan. Thank you.
Got a couple drainage issues for us this morning?
I do, just two quick items. First off is the seeking approval for a repair report on County Ditch 39, which is located in Judson Township, kind of just, my bearings here, just north of Lake Crystal. Seeking approval for $24,089.15 for seller's construction, replacing a small branch line out there, and the only reason I'm seeking approval is because this one is currently in the red or negative at the moment, but we are actively collecting for the deficit, so.
Still moved?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any other discussion on the County Ditch 39 repair? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, my second item is looking to set a hearing date for County Ditch 56, Branch 3. This is a petition for reroute involving U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Minnesota Valley Lands. County Ditch 56 watershed is approximately 9,400 acres in size and located in Garden City and Lincoln Townships. On November 25th of 2024, a petition to impound reroute and divert portions of County Ditch 56, Branch 3, was received on behalf of the petitioners from Minnesota Valley Lands LLC and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a Bureau of the U.S. Department of Interior. The proposed petition affects portions of property line in Sections 9, 16, and 17 of Garden City Township, Blue Earth County. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugan of Brinkie Noonan has reviewed this petition and found it to be adequate for these proceedings with no bond needed, as it is a federal agency as one of the listed petitioners. On December 17th of 2024, Charles J. Brandl of ISG was appointed as the engineer for these proceedings in order to produce and submit an engineer's advisory report pertaining to the proposed petition. My request at today's Drainage Authority meeting, we're requesting the Drainage Authority set a public hearing date for the proposed petition in review of the engineer's advisory report affecting portions of County Ditch 56, Branch 3, for March 25th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in this room.
Thank you, Ryan.
Still moved?
Got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan, have a good day.
Good day.
All right, we'll move on to item number five, we got Ryan and Chad here today.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ryan brought his muscle with him today.
I did.
Yeah.
Being that we're looking at a few maintenance contracts and anticipating some discussion on those, I invited Chad to attend today because he was the one that had lion's share of those discussions, so he can help me answer questions as they arise. All right, first action item is consideration of final contract payment for State Aid Project 007682010. This is County State Highway 82 Victory Drive reconstruction from south of Hoffman Road to north of Marwood Drive by Dirt Merchant Incorporated. Original contract amount was $3,144,807.42. Final contract payment, $46,430.56, for a total final contract amount of $3,136,069.31. I would recommend approval of this final contract payment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the final contract, 007682010, any discussion?
All I gotta say is the road looks nice. Thank you. They did a great job. Intersection is easy to go through, it's, it was well constructed.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Good, with the challenges they had last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, it took a bit.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, the next action item is consideration of MINDOT Contract Number 1058887 for State Aid Project 007609016. This is to provide federal funding for construction engineering expenses associated with State Aid Project 007609013 for emergency bridge removal. This agreement allows the county to request federal funding for reimbursement for construction engineering costs associated with the bridge removal contract out on County State Highway 9. This is expected to cover county staff costs associated with project delivery up to $232,828.26. We're not 100% certain if it will cover consultant costs anticipated to be around $20,000, just due to federal solicitation requirements and whether or not they were met and us having to kind of expedite that process. So with that, I would recommend approval of the agreement, and then action item four is actually a resolution for this agency agreement as well attached. So I think what we've been doing is in one motion requesting approval of the agreement and the resolution supporting the agreement authorizing the board to enter into this agreement.
So you want to do two and four at the same time, or separately?
Two and three. Sorry, I did try to set four. Up to you guys completely, however you'd like to proceed.
Okay, we'll do them in two separate motions, just to... All right, you heard the request for the Contract 1058887, do you have a motion?
Still moved?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, and action item number three is a resolution for agency agreement for Agreement Number 1058887 authorizing the county to execute, the county administrator and county board chair to execute and enter into the agreement.
Still moved?
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the Resolution 1058887, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, action item number four is consideration of a cooperative construction agreement between Blue Earth County and the city of Mankato for the installation of traffic signals at County State Highway 82 Victory Drive and Hazelton Drive, Hazelton Road, and for the installation of street lighting along Victory Drive. This is a project being initiated and led by the city of Mankato. They will lead the installation of the traffic signals at Hazelton Road to facilitate development as well as the street light installation. The city will assess for 50% of the signal improvement costs, and of that 50% assessment, half of that will be applied and credited towards the county, which you can see on the last page of the agreement, there's a credit for the county for their assessments that's being made to the development. The total revised as-bid county cost for the project is $281,982.76. I recommend approval of this cooperative construction agreement.
I'll move it.
Got a motion of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
All right, action item number five is consideration of award of bids for the 2025 Maintenance Gravel Furnishing Crushing Contract. I'll start off with just saying, I think we are very frustrated with the results this year.
Yeah.
We only received one bid, it was $3.55 a ton, more than last year's bid price, following the opening of the bids. Chad spoke with several of our historic suppliers regarding the current market trends, and we learned some facts. The Highway 22 project obviously is a major factor in this, it's going to be very disruptive to traffic patterns and getting to the quarries that are along Highway 22. Obviously, Third Avenue is an outlet for that, however, Third Avenue has significant issues with the train tracks blocking traffic excessively, I think we're all aware of that. So I think that was a concern that we've had, as well as industry, with respect to the ability to haul those materials out this year and next year. Additionally, in the region with some of the projects going on, aggregate resources are in high demand and their resources may be limited of what's available to us. We also honestly suspect that the bidder may have anticipated that they would be the only bidder on the project. So with that being said, we think there's two options, the board could reject the bids, we can rebid this contract. We're not highly optimistic that this will result in more bids because the brass tacks of the pits that are available to us and the materials that are available is not going to change in the next month. The board could accept the bids, and the county would be obligated to purchase a minimum of 80% of the contracted quantity, which would be 32,000 tons, or about $336,000, so we could take off about $80,000 off the contract for the project specifications. We anticipate that due to the light winter that we've had, especially the last two years, we haven't done a tremendous amount of plowing on the gravel roads, which is a major contributor to the loss of aggregates from these roads, which is, I mean, obviously, they still get pounded down and smashed out with heavy traffic, but the limited amount of plowing has likely led to a slightly lower need for maintenance gravel, so we think between, maybe you want to talk about it a little bit, what your plan would be, but we think between this this year's aggregate that was purchased last year that'll be hauled this year and next year's aggregates, we think if we reduce the quantity, we could make do.
Yeah, which would save in future contracts for our gravel hauling if we don't do as many miles. Typically, we try and resurface about 100 miles a year.
Okay.
So we could cut that back some temporarily, I don't want to lose that real way forward, but I think with the situation at hand, that might be a good trajectory to go.
So we would be, you know, looking at likely about 80 miles if we were to cut the quantity of gravel down?
Well, it ain't my 20, Kevin.
Exactly.
I was thinking the same thing.
You're on time.
Go ahead, Kevin.
And this is probably a problem or a situation that's not going to fix itself or get any better either, right?
That's what I'm afraid of.
We're running out of gravel.
Correct.
So that's the big thing right now, is we're short on gravel pits across the southern part of the state, or what?
Pits in general, aggregate resources are dwindling across the region, for sure, and then you couple that in with some mega projects that are taking up a huge quantity, you know, the Walmart Distribution Center type of projects, our own shop. Our own shop, yeah.
That's the problem.
And other regional projects like that, and then the Highway 22 project online, it's just a lot going on in our region for those pits to be able to, you know, they typically only produce, have so much production capacity every year as well.
Interesting.
We couldn't foresee this, I suppose, or you knew it was...
Ryan's been talking about it for a while.
Yeah, we talked about it.
This is finally hitting us.
Hitting us, yeah.
This is, this is, they, this is hauled gravel, right?
This is crushed and piled, stockpiled in their pit, and then we have the gravel hauling contract, so the gravel hauling contract that we'll award this year is for the gravel that was produced last year, so we're always a year behind.
So this is just for the gravel?
Just for the material. Additionally, the one thing I should probably add is there's also an alternative bid for crushing and stockpiling bituminous recycled asphalt product. Tim's Trucking was the low bid on that, we use that material for shouldering, it works fantastic, and the price of it is, is that our material, I believe?
Yep, it's our material.
It's our own material, so it's a much lower price, so this is for grading it and crushing it, but we would also, if we consider these awards, we'd also like to consider that separately and award that to Tim's Trucking.
In consideration to that, I just checked the pricing of this type of material at a local contractor, and it's about $10.50 a ton, $10.50 a ton, so that crushing price is a fairly good price.
Yeah, and we typically, what we'll do is we'll have the wrapped recycled asphalt product off of some of our projects where there's milling and other work are chunked out, and we'll have it hauled to our pits so that we can keep it and use it for our maintenance projects in this purpose.
And I know we've talked about this in the past, but I mean, we're obviously always looking for other resources other than gravel to do our roads, we've done some cold mixed roads, we've done...
And that's why we recycle a lot of the roads.
Recycle.
But we still happen to add more material on top of them to get to the final grade because we're widening, yeah, so we certainly need aggregate quarries.
Well, it sounds like you're in the middle, whether you want to have us approve this or, well, wait, and I guess I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Yeah, at the full 40,000, or, okay.
I'll second that.
I got a motion in a second, that's what I was gonna add, I think that, you know, we're approving the whole 40 tons, if you really think we need to do it, we just gotta do it. I mean, it doesn't make sense, it ain't gonna get any cheaper next year, probably, and if it does, if we need the 100 miles of road, you know, unless we're all in Kevin's district, then...
Wait.
Trying to be fair with both of you.
Well, I'm okay with doing 80 miles. And the gravel roads are for the road to market, for the farmers, I mean, trust me, in my district, I don't have a lot of gravel roads.
It is, it is, it's tough, yeah.
But we drive on them.
But we need, we need to have good roads to drive on, and that's very necessary, so...
I appreciate the effort and at least bringing that and thinking outside the box, but if you guys really strongly need to get it all done, I just do it.
I appreciate that. It is a concerning precedent if we start reducing it because then we've got to build it back up in the future.
It's just gonna be problematic.
I think we'll be strategic about the placement of this and maybe even hold some in reserve if need be to for those projects, so, thank you.
I think that'll work out really well, so. All right, good discussion, I got a motion in a second for the gravel contract. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then that also includes the Tim's Trucking bid?
I thought we'd do that separate.
Okay.
So if you want to talk about that a little more, but otherwise...
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for the bituminous material contract to Tim's Trucking, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, well, I'd like to say it's better news on our CRS bituminous materials contract, but this one is also very frustrating. Two years ago, Flint Hills Resources submitted a bid, along with others, with modifications made to the terms of the proposal. The bid was not accepted based on guidance from MINDOT and the attorney's office, we made attempted, we made attempted several times, we attempted to coordinate proposed language to something that would be acceptable to Flint Hills. They ultimately ended up not bidding on last year's contract after we made those minor contractual language revisions. So we developed a proposal, and the contractors are supposed to bid on that proposal. What we got back from Flint Hills this year was a cover letter modifying the terms of our proposal. So we shared this with Megan in the attorney's office, and I believe Pat, she's spoken with you about it. Page one, they clarify they're not a, they're not a supplier, not a contractor, so there's language changes for that. They changed the sampling and testing of the product, the requirements that are in our contract that fall on the MINDOT requirements, and then at the end, the most concerning thing is they say, unless otherwise agreed to in writing by both parties, this sales agreement is subject to the Flint Hills Terms of Sale available on their website, and that term of sale may be modified by the seller at any time without notice to the buyer, and future deliveries of product under the sales agreement are subject to the version of their, their most current version on their website, and we are accepting of that. Additionally, after the county attorney's office looked into all the legalities posted on their website, it's not legally advisable to award to Flint Hills, who was the low bidder. They require that any legal action takes place in the courts in Kansas, reimbursement for tariffs or duties, and the insurance is struck out, they added language to paragraphs without noting it, so very questionable. So effectively, after talking with the county attorney's office, their recommendation is that this is not legally advisable to award the contract to Flint Hills Resources. Very frustrating because they are $100,000 low bid.
I was trying, I don't quite get...
They don't like to do this.
The motivation, whatever, with, for them.
And Chad's spoken with them more often than I have, and I don't know if you have any...
Yeah, so two years ago, after, and at that point, I think we referred to MINDOT, and their recommendation two years ago was to throw the bid out at that point because it wouldn't be fair to other bidders. Working with Flint Hills, initially, they were like, we do this with all the counties, like, well, we've got, that's fine, but we're not all the other companies, so we need to work on this. And I thought we had got to a point where this was gonna work for both us and them, but apparently, they still feel there's some language in there that they don't want to abide by, and it's frustrating.
And the language is in there, isn't anything we dreamed up, this is all MINDOT standard specification, both of their specs. Everybody follows.
Yeah.
We did up the quantity, the one noteworthy thing is you do see a jump in the prices of the unit prices, but you also see that the quantity for the CRS 2 emulsion did go up by 150 tons. To offset that a little bit, the CSS 1 went down about 75 tons, so there is a little bit of a change there in the quantities which affected the price, but obviously, we're seeing price increases significantly on those asphalt cement materials. And this is, again, is the materials that we use for seal coating our roads, this is the binder that gets laid down before we chip seal, and then we also use the CRS to fog seal trails and other roads. So with that being said, my recommendation would be to award to the second bidder HG Miggs.
All right, Jared, the request?
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a second, got a motion in a second for HG Miggs.
I don't understand how they... I don't think we have a choice. I just don't get, I don't think we have a choice.
I don't believe we do either, based on...
We can't, I mean, when we make, we make the recommendations with the bid, is that's what it is. They can't, they can't control that, and that's what they're trying to do.
It's not fair to the other bidders if they're even striking things out, making...
Because if we gave them that chance, we'd have to turn around and go back to the other bidders at the same time.
We will work, try to work with them again and try to resolve these things, whether or not we're gonna get there or not is another story, but we're gonna try to make attempts because obviously, that's a lot to leave on the table, and we're extremely frustrated with this as well, and this response, and the lack of communication leading up to it, too. You know, had they looked at this and said, well, this is gonna be a problem for us, maybe we could have issued an addendum or something to try to address these concerns, but this, the website, and those terms are unacceptable.
Well, it makes it more challenging in you guys' spot because you have to work with what the state wants, too.
Correct.
It's not all on your table, it's, you got other outside parameters you have to deal with, so.
Question?
Yes, sir.
And I'm, well, as supportive of this, just out of curiosity, in your conversations with other counties, is anybody else using Flint Hills, or is it the same concerns, or would we be the worst case?
I've got that set up for conversation for the next district meeting for the county engineers.
But interesting, yeah, that's, that's kind of a work together on that, that's a lot.
All righty, any other discussion or questions on the 2025 bituminous material contract? I have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, we'll buzz through some information updates. Our construction projects, County State Highway 5 from Riverfront to Summit in Mankato, 60% plans were received, we're gonna be submitting comments back to Bolton and Mink on those, but in the coming months, we're anticipating 90% plans, I believe we also need to get a public open house meeting scheduled, likely will be after harvest season. open house meeting scheduled likely will be after harvest season, probably early summer, late spring, early summer. CASA fifteen and twenty-eight in St. Clair, two weeks ago, I believe, we had the private, public open house meeting. Was very well attended, seemed to go well. I think the conversations I had in general were good. There was conversation about the fact that we will be narrowing the road up, but the city is really, as I understand it, the city strongly wants to make sure that they have adequate pedestrian facilities and to fit with that right-of-way envelope and to have room for snow storage in the boulevards. The road is fairly wide through there, so we'll be going down to either a forty or a forty-four foot section, similar in context to what we've done in Vernon Center in Good Thunder. So more of the busier downtown area will have ten-foot shoulders for the parking, so it'll be wider, so that'll be a forty-four foot road section. And the less busy areas will be the forty foot, also for speed reduction. Mr.?
I guess, and I, you know, as if there are concerns and stuff, I would just have them visit with the Vernon, I mean, we had, what, multiple meetings-
Correct.
-on that street. We thought the world was gonna come to an end by narrowing up the street. It wasn't that big a deal. Everybody's kind of working through it, and the process worked, but it's not, it's not the end of the world. So we really haven't heard any negative backlash from that anyway. So with the communication and stuff like that, but it's, we learned firsthand at Vernon Center, it's not the end of the world.
Thank you.
Have a narrower street.
In addition to that, Bolton Make, who's designing the project and is the city engineer, also did run auto turn templates for the trucks. And so there may be corners where parking is restricted so that the trucks, we can make sure the trucks can make the turning movements that they need to make. But they'd already been doing that, you know, especially with consideration of traffic going out to Minnesota Elevator and things of that nature.
It is a little bit of a unique situation. And again, we narrowed the roads in Eagle Lake, and they do slow the traffic down, because again, on the north side, it's definitely narrow. And, but I think their biggest concern was the truck traffic from Minnesota Elevator, and they probably get way more trucks coming through there than we do in Eagle Lake. And I think they were receptive to the pushing the parking back a little bit, but they definitely, I would say they seem supportive of the narrower road because of the pedestrians. It seemed to be okay. But I appreciate you guys making sure that you stay on the same page with them. So overall-
Thank you.
The truck traffic is a little different through there.
It is.
A lot more, you know, we have all farm to market in all our smaller communities, but the truck traffic going to Minnesota, I have no idea how much comes through there from Minnesota Elevator. I know a lot goes down six hundred and tenth Avenue, which they want that blacktop. That conversation's done, so.
You're right. Thank you for that.
So, I, but I think you guys are doing a great job of trying to accommodate them.
Thank you.
And we've been getting good feedback from Marvin. I mean, Marvin's not afraid to speak up.
Yep.
Tell us what he thinks.
I think we've had some good open conversation with city leadership and staff there. So everybody, we've laid it on the table and tried to be as abundantly clear as possible. This will be impactful, but it's, as Commissioner Pap said, it's, it's something that we've done in other communities, and it's been successful slowing traffic down, and it still works, so.
Yeah, it's a nice road.
Yep. County State Highway thirteen, from one sixty-nine to ten, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency administered a penalty order issue. On February fourth, we met with the PCA and Mathewitz Construction. We discussed the alleged violations and made our arguments of where we thought they were being heavy-handed or their penalties weren't applicable. Following that meeting, they reevaluated the APO in consideration of our discussions and proposed to reduce the penalty from sixteen thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars to fifteen thousand thirty-seven dollars. So frustrated with that. However, after further discussion with Mathewitz, I think both the county and the contractor believe that further challenging this with legal action would not be cost effective. We did submit, on March third, submitted a letter informing the PCA that we do not intend to further challenge the APO, and we will accept it at the fifteen thousand dollars. We expressed significant frustration with their heavy-handedness and their lack of partnering with local agencies.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but it's a business decision at that point.
Correct.
Principle's out the window. It's tough, but you have to do-
And we do have some areas where we should've been more vigilant and that we really can't argue. The argument, the only argument we have is that we were completely inundated with Rapid and Dam, you know, emergency and disaster, and it just, we didn't have people available. The person that was on that job was Mike. Mike was integral out of the dam for all of the work that was happening. So I can't say is that we, we had the resources to do much else above and beyond.
All right.
CASA ten, from the West County Line to twenty, we've reviewed, we've received the core permit. We're hoping to get that out to bid soon. We are still working on the right-of-way, though. That's a big, long project. Jack said about seventy-five percent completion on the right-of-way. The new requirement is that you have to get the core permit and then submit your MPCA permit, and that could be up to a thirty-day review because of the size of the, size of the project. They have to actually have the full plan set and review the entire plan before you get your permit. It's not the seven-day turnaround. So that's a thirty-day turnaround. So with that, we anticipate opening bids potentially in late April or early May. We could certainly see a portion of that project trickle into twenty twenty-six. But we'd like to get the bridge and the lion's share of that project constructed this year. Fortunately, it's relatively low volume. It's a little over a hundred and hundred and change vehicles per day, but it is an important part of the market corridor and central part of the county. County State Highway forty, slope repair project. We need to obtain the right-of-way for the project to submit the documents to MINDOT for authorization to proceed, so that's gonna be moving forward, meeting with a single landowner out there. We have had some preliminary conversations. They appear to understand the need for that slope repair project, because they don't want the road pushed farther, take up their farmland and move the road away from the river that's eroding. CASA ten, from Vernon Center to one mile east, including the bridge replacement. The preliminary bridge plans were reviewed by MINDOT. We expect the sixty percent road plants in the coming month, and the twenty-ninth bridge replacement. Contractor has mobilized equipment to the site and is scheduled to begin work as early as March seventeenth, so we'll have that going pretty quickly. Then we've also got a box culvert project on County Road one eighty-four that'll be set for this spring. We're waiting on the contractor's schedule on that. However, we'll have other box culvert projects later this fall also. So, maintenance activities updates, I don't know, would you like to give those, or?
Can I stop for a second?
Yeah.
Just, as we talk about ten from the county line to twenty.
Yes.
We've got, like, to have landowner meetings. We've got some ditch projects going on at that same time. Just hope that coordinate with the drainage staff and stuff that we're aware of that, so we can-
Okay.
-get it done right the first time and right things happen in the right order if possible.
Yep. Typically speaking, you know, for those crossings, we take care of those crossings as part of the road project and upgrade those and replace them completely.
Yep. I'd rather do it before construction instead of borum afterwards.
Correct, yeah.
Drainage authority.
Okay, so the maintenance activities. Crews have been working on blading gravel roads when moisture allows, particularly after this last snowstorm. We've got some much-needed moisture. Crews are also working on cutting trees within the right-of-ways to improve sightlines and getting rid of any potential hazardous trees that may fall into the right-of-way around the road. Crews are also painting equipment as we have some cold and rainy days, and we'll be continuing to do that throughout the spring. Unfortunately, we've had some guard rail repairs, even with the mild winter, that still seems to be an issue. So we're working on doing guard rail repairs throughout the county. And of course, mechanics are busy in the shop getting some of the preseason checks done on our equipment that we're gonna be utilizing this spring and summer. Just a brief update.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Chad on the maintenance updates? Thank you, Chad.
All right. And just for your information, we have the updated Highway User Tax Distribution Fund for local roads and bridges for two thousand and twenty-five. It's really handy. I have a couple extras if anybody wants additional copies. But this is a breakdown of the total revenues through the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. You can see nine hundred and twenty-five million of fuel tax revenue, license fees about a billion dollars, motor vehicle sales tax, six hundred and eighty-nine million, and then other fees and taxes at about two hundred and forty million, for a total of two point nine three three billion dollars, which then is subdivided into the distribution, which ninety-five percent goes towards regular distribution of the ninety-five percent, twenty-nine percent goes to the County State Highway Fund. So the total County State Highway distribution is about eight hundred million dollars, you know, which I think we get about one point four, five percent, somewhere in that neighborhood. So, any questions on that, please let me know. Just know that's handy to have.
It's interesting that the auto parts sales tax is a quarter what the gas tax is.
Yeah.
That's, you know, I think that's a price that, that would be that much higher, and it's a positive thing for roads and bridges across the state.
Yep. Last but not least, I did include a memorandum, updates on the County State Highway nine bridge and the Rapid and Dam. Regarding the bridge, on February fifth, the subcontractor, Vite, used explosive charges to sever and fell the beams on spans two, three, and four. The blessing went well, and as expected. Weekly, bridge design check-in meetings are underway. We hold those every Tuesday. On February sixth, we held a bridge design kickoff meeting with TKDA, reviewed existing conditions, kind of set the project up, talked about the potential risks, talked about coordination with different agencies involved in the project, coordination with BAR engineering, and then needs for the project. We began discussing bridge alignment alternative analysis. On the twentieth, we participated in a MINDOT State Aid Coordination Meeting with TKDA and MINDOT to discuss MINDOT's role and what level of coordination they want to have in this project because of the, obviously, very large price tag and the significance and notoriety of this bridge. They're gonna have a, have a role in the project more so than they would on a typical bridge replacement project. February twenty-sixth, we participated in a workshop at TKDA with their subcontractors and BAR engineering. We spent about half of the day up there, working through project assumptions. The big project assumption that we have to make at this point in time is that there's gonna be an interim condition after the bridge is constructed where the dam is still going to be in place. We have to design for that accordingly and acknowledge that there could be potential risk of, if a large flood event happens during that time, how can we protect the bridge elements while, while still getting the bridge project completed and knowing that the dam has to come out. Once the dam comes out, the channel moves back over to the east in all likelihood, and, but unfortunately, we have to deal with the likely scenario. We can't, I think after all of our discussions there, we determined that we really can't assume that the dam is gonna be taken out before the bridge. The way the funding is laying out and the amount of risk associated with dam removal just impacts to the schedule with the different agency coordination between the FERC, the FEMA, the potential, whether or not the funding is gonna be adequate, Corps of Engineers, all of the permits that are necessary, and then obviously, this historical clearances that are necessary in cultural resources.
Of the items that you just mentioned, Ryan, where does the financing and the funding come into play?
Well, the funding comes into play with respect to FEMA and how much-
How much, I mean, my question is, is the funding holding up the process more than some of these other processes?
Not yet. I think we don't know what we're gonna get from FEMA yet, and we don't know what the total cost estimate is yet. BAR's working on developing that now that we've got them on board.
What is that timeline of knowing that number?
That's, yeah, good question. With respect to FEMA?
Nope.
Or with respect to the, the total cost estimate?
Well, we're in control of-
Yeah.
What, just to take the dam out, I understand the river restoration's all-
I would anticipate we should have that in the coming months.
Okay.
It's a, it's a big lift, and that is something I, we've been pressing and talking about that we need to get rolling on that. But there's, there's just a lot to this scope. But I know that's the big question, because we're all getting asked that question, right?
But until that's done, we can't really blame FEMA.
No, no.
Because they don't, that's information we need first, correct?
Not really. It's, it's-
Well, because they're not, they're not removing the dam. FEMA's figuring a price to make it back to the way it was.
Correct.
So our numbers are irrelevant, because we're not even working on those numbers.
Right. And we can roll over the cost of what they'll give us to return it to pre-existing condition, but then if we're short, we've gotta come up with-
Right.
-something to fill the gap.
Correct.
But FEMA number does give us a baseline to work from, too. So it is related. Certainly, the work that BAR is doing to come up with an engineering estimate to remove the dam is an important number also, but we really need both at the end of the day.
Part of why BAR's not there, too, is because they're still working through the river profile and how much work has to happen in the river to just stabilize it so that we can, you know, not even talking about a full ecosystem restoration scope of a project, but can we just simply start the work from the limits that FEMA will support, which is effectively upstream of the bridge and through the dam, through the bridge, through the county park area and around the bend, and stop? Or is there more work that would be necessary just to stabilize and have the river hold or maintain? So that's what they're looking at right now, is also the river design.
So I'm confused. Who is working on the number that FEMA will use? Is that FEMA works on that number, not BAR? BAR's only doing-
Correct.
The, looking at dam removal.
Correct.
So FEMA is putting up, so I stand corrected. I, I thought-
Gotcha.
BAR was putting that number together.
No, no, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Will BAR check FEMA's numbers?
So, yep, I was gonna touch on that. FEMA is, right now, is developing quantities. How much quantities would it take? How much quantities have been damaged? They're quantifying everything. The next step is to then to scope out the repairs of the dam to turn it back theoretically to pre-existing condition. When that step happens, I've been very adamant that I want BAR involved, because I don't, we don't wanna, an unrealistic Walmart version of, of a repair, right? We need to make sure that we're getting a realistic repair that if we were going to do it, would be covered, and that's something that's feasible, something that would be long-lasting. So with that being said, we want to have BAR involved in that process, working with FEMA. I think they've been very receptive to that, of developing the scope and assisting with estimating the costs to return the dam to that pre-flood condition. But in the meantime, we've also got BAR working on the side, developing a cost estimate to remove the dam for the dam removal project. Does that help?
That was very helpful.
Okay. So back to the bridge design. The West River Embankment is considerable, design consideration given the concern with future erosion and the slope instability, so we're working through that as an element with BAR and TKDA. All preliminary costs are coming in above the FHWA-approved emergency relief funding amounts. So as soon as we get more of a confident estimate, we're gonna initiate conversations with FHWA and MINDOT about how best to cover that gap. What we're finding is that the substructure, to get a foundation that gets below deep enough to avoid future scour of the river channel washing away, to get a robust foundation. And now because of the, the fact that the, the valley is eroded down, the road is still connected at the high points of, and so the bridge is now getting taller. It requires a very robust pier structure and foundations in the piers. So they're working through an alignment alternative. They came up with about ten different alignments. In fact, I believe in April, we're gonna be having a workshop going through all the different proposal alignments. Right now, where we're leading, they're gonna do an alignment memorandum, report on it. But the way it's looking is that the best option is to stay on the existing alignment for the most part, because it minimizes risk associated with impacts to the dam. It minimizes risk with association to potential scour in the future where the abutments land. So Matt will be here again in early April to talk about it in more depth. And they did assign cost to all of those options as well, or very high-level preliminary costs. One of the other discussions, and again, we'll get more in-depth on it, is to talk about bridge width. The old bridge was fifty-two feet, ten inches wide. The new bridge is currently proposed to be fifty-seven feet wide. We may be able to narrow it up. As you may recall, any widening may end up being a county cost if we don't have a strong argument of why the additional width is necessary, because of the deck geometrics and drainage needs. I think there could be an argument there, but a lot of it is also based on pedestrian needs and bicycle needs. I know we want to keep that as an element of the deck, but if we start incorporating a ra, a separated railing and then a separated pedestrian area and another railing, that adds considerable width to the bridge in comparison to having just adequately wide shoulder where pedestrians and bicyclists can go across the bridge. So we've got to talk about that a little bit more. A steel-brimmed bridge was assumed in all scenarios due to the longer span and length capacity, and the existing alignment, again, we talked about that, was, currently looks to be the best option. So we'll be bringing that in April for further discussion. The bridge removal contractor continues to haul out the bridge debris and beginning to work on the bridge pier removal, so they actually used a cable saw, cut them, cut them off right above the, the footing, and actually tipped them over, so the column themselves have been tipped down and dropped on the two-center river. have been tipped down and dropped on the two center river piers, and they're rubbleizing those, and then they're working on taking out the footing and removing the piling from the river.
Interesting.
Flow conditions stay low. With respect to the dam, on February 10th, we had our regular coordination meeting with FEMA. We've been providing, we did provide and discuss the Tener Gate inspection, so we actually used, MINDOT assisted us with some drone inspection of the Tener Gates, and we compared those photos and the footage taken by MINDOT to the 2019 reports so that we were able to differentiate between the damages to the gates in 2019 and the additional damages incurred in 2024, provided that to FEMA. We've been working on their inspection reports for quantification of damages. A lot of cleanup on that, a lot of back and forth, and still underway. Tree debris removal is 100% obligated, available for reimbursement. We also talked about with the DNR about the clarification on downstream sediment removal and river cleanup. They asked if that was eligible for FEMA funding, and it's not because it's not an improved area. So again, it's got to be kind of contiguous from the road right away and through the park is really the area FEMA costs participate on. The FERC has resubmitted notice of intent to surrender. I won't go through all of these completely in depth. I know you guys have the report as well. February 14th, we met virtually with BAR. We anticipate submitting the SHIPO preliminary findings report in the coming weeks. We ended up doing that early March. I submitted that last week. Braun has started drilling soil borings at the site. The river channel hydraulics and hydrology are moving forward and still under design. We talked about having to get some access for some borings on private property, so I'm working on that right now as well, discussions with the landowners, and also talked with BAR about a future county board work session, I think, and just trying to figure out when the timing is right. We also held a kickoff meeting on February 19th with BAR to talk about the the project kicking off and beginning their design work. They're going to intend to develop 30% plan prior to any public outreach, discuss park elements and other things of that nature. So I think the big question that I've heard from some landowners out there is, do we still need a park out there? And so I think that's obviously a discussion that has to be had with the board and with the public feedback, and then we'll be we'll be moving forward with that under the BAR contract in the future. On the 24th, we had another weekly, bi-weekly call with FEMA. Again, went through several of the project elements and asked where the DDD is. They're still working on quantification, and we're getting close to the end of that based on our call on Monday. They feel like they're they're getting really close on the quantification and being ready to start scoping out the work. So with that, there's a lot of other items in here. I won't read them all over again, I know I've been up here for a while, so happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions on Ryan's report?
Second, may I?
Say the least.
Did any of the else done?
No, not really. It's hard. It's hard to get, hard to pay attention to the things that should be also paying more attention to just because of the time that this takes, so. But we're taking we're taking steps. They might be, you know, it's going to be a very slow process. I appreciate your patience. It's going to be very time consuming. It's going to be slow. It's going to take years, but I mean, we we're starting to see the path out in front of us, and that's that's reassuring for me that at least we can kind of know where we're going, we can see general direction, we can see consensus building, we're starting to get some traction.
Well, they get away from the dam talk. Victory Drive, do we have a date that we're starting?
No, we have not had a pre-construction meeting yet with our contractor.
Okay. All right, other questions for Ryan or Chad? Thank you both for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number six. Patrick.
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, the report speaks for itself. Couple of things that I did want to bring to your attention. We've been spending quite a bit of time with taxpayer services, and I think we're getting some pretty good results on all the tax appeals. Those continue to whittle away at those. Like, there was a couple of site inspection just yesterday on one of them, but then we're seeing kind of the national trend of in the criminal area of more serious cases, and just to bring to your attention, yesterday, we had an individual that was sentenced to 540 months in prison or 45 years, and late last week, one for 712 months or just basically 59 and a third years. So we've been seeing some pretty interesting things in our neck of the woods, so to speak, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of a couple of those. So we don't see them very often, but we tend to see things more. You know, we had a grand jury last month indicted another individual on first degree homicide charges, so, yeah, we're busy. Questions, concerns, comments?
Questions for Pat?
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Pat. All right, move down into administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for February 25th.
Move approval.
Got a motion of a second for the minutes? Got a motion and a second for the minutes? Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Move approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills? Any discussion?
All right. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab eight in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. Just have informational items for the board today, starting with a lateral transfer, actually two of them in our child support area and human services, shifting from child support enforcement specialist to case aides serving the child support unit. This is part of a reorganization that was part of the 2025 budget plans. Then we had a promotion of an eligibility specialist to, again, two of these, eligibility specialists to financial assistance coordinators, again, part of that restructuring in our financial assistance area to have program coordinators available to do some of the training of our financial workers. Then we had filled a jury attendant role in our sheriff's office, as well as filled a correctional officer in the jail. We also had a promotion in our PR, our public, our property and environmental resources area from a PR specialist two in recording to a recording coordinator, and then we've initiated recruitment to fill that property environmental resources specialist two position. Be happy to answer any questions if the board has any on those items.
Any questions on the human resources?
No.
Okay.
All right, tab nine in your packet then is a memo regarding an RFP that was issued for the Public Works Fiber Project. The board will recall that you've rejected two previous bids based on various problems with the bids that were received, and so we're back again with the third round. As staff have reviewed the bids, you know, we had estimated the bids to be at about 215,000. Bids were opened on February 3rd with five bids being received. Castor John came in at 244,537 as the low bid, and so we're recommending acceptance of the bid from Castor John in that amount.
Move approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 10 in your packet then is a memo regarding a 3-2 liquor license. Received an application from Caddell Cycle Club for an on-sale license. That application has been reviewed by the county attorney and sheriff, and so we're recommending approval of this license.
So? Second.
Got a motion and a second for the liquor license? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 11 in your packet is a resolution to approve the official representative for the hazard mitigation grant. This is an application that the county intends to submit on behalf of properties that were damaged with the flooding. This would grant authority for the Director of Property and Environmental Resources Department to be the official signatory and authorized representative for the county for those applications. Since this is an unbudgeted sort of grant application, we wanted the board's approval to grant that authority.
Move approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the grant authorization resolution? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Tab 12 is the financial status report for February 28th, so two months into our fiscal year. You'll see total revenue sit at 12.4 million versus expenditures of 25 million, so we are in that period where we'll continue to draw on reserves from a cash flow standpoint. Just in terms of overall or specific items here, our state and federal revenues are down quite a bit from a prior year but are on target for our budget, so not a concern there, more of a timing issue. We continue to see strong return on our investments, so that number is up from where we anticipated. On the expenditure side, we do see personal services running a little bit above budget. That's reflective of a third payroll in January, and so that will even out over the course of the year. The building and equipment purchase line is up quite a bit from the prior year, obviously with the construction of the Public Works facility. We'll see that continue throughout the year. Under the enterprise fund, then, you'll see total revenue sit at 1.25 million against expenses that are just under 500,000. So again, an example of where the landfill produces strong revenues that exceed our expenditures when we don't have large equipment purchases or sell construction costs included. The second page then shows our cash and investment balances. Towards the top, the total available funds at 72.8 million, the target based on six months of our operating budget would be 74.3 million, so just slightly ahead there. Total county funds at 127.3 million towards the bottom. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has on any other items related to a financial status report.
Any questions on the finances? None, I guess, Bob?
All right.
Looks like that brings us to the end of our agenda. If there's nothing else to bring before this board, I will do some committee reports. Mark, I will start with you today.
Mine's quite short. We had on the February 28th, did have a ice arena update at the Old Seasons Arena and moving along, and then actually yesterday, yes, I didn't have much. Yesterday did go several other members here. We were at the adult drug court graduation. Had been to one of those for years, so it was interesting.
All right, thank you, Mark. Your report. Kevin?
On February 25th, since that last meeting, we had a CD 35 landowner meeting, participated in the AMC Legislative Conference, Minnesota Rural Counties, the AMC Environment Committee, as well as the board meeting in March 1st through 5th, involved in the NACO Legislative Conference, Bank Policy, where I've served as a subcommittee chair, attended the RAC, the Central Caucus, as well as the Minnesota Caucus and the Minnesota Breakfast. March 6th was SWCD meeting, and yesterday, on the 10th, we had landowner meetings for CD 53, CD 74, CD 88, and CD 93. So it was a full day of people in the historic courthouse yesterday talking their age. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Patty?
I too attended the NACO conference, went on on the 28th, and came home a day early because of a blizzard coming in, which I was thankful to do. And then yesterday, I attended the adult drug test, court graduation also, which was my first, and it was very interesting and touching.
Thank you, Patty. Vance?
I had two, attended the AMC ledge conference, and from that conference, I went to the NACO ledge conference in Washington DC. Along with Patty, we came home early on Tuesday, and because of the blizzard coming through and finding out that our flight was going to be later even yet, so it was nice to have that, coming home early. Yesterday, I attended the adult drug court graduation, and I agree that it was touching and it was well worth going to to see what goes on there. I will certainly attend more. And then that later on that afternoon, I attended the detox board meeting in New Ulm, and brings us up to today.
All right, thank you, Vance. I don't have a whole lot to add. I was out of town for a few days last week, but as was mentioned, all the county ditch stuff we've been dealing with on the last few months, we've been very busy, but two, the two ditches that I had in the afternoon were very well attended, and my understanding yours in the morning was well attended too, so it's good to see participation, and I appreciate the staff taking the extra time and getting these people together because with these little larger systems, it just makes our life easier here in the boardroom. And Kevin pointed out yesterday at the meeting that, you know, let's get this stuff done now, and I think it was very well taken, and there was a lot of discussion afterwards, so hopefully we'll get a lot of that ironed out. I had a few calls on some plowing gravel gravel road issues with the snow and the rain, and that's about all I really had for the last couple of weeks, so that brings me to the end of my report. Anything else to bring before this board? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.